Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 27, 2022. Ms. Hernandez, will you call the attendance, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Newman?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Sobrowski notify us he won't be here today. Commissioner Godfrey?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Springer?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ferris?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Laws? Not present. Attendance taken.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the meeting March 23, 2022.
Move for the approval of the March 23, 2022 meeting minutes?
Support. The motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion, say yes.
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 Opposed, the same? The motion passes. Thank you. Correspondence, Ms. Hernandez?
No correspondence. We just received a few calls, but no correspondence.
Item five, additions or deletions?
We do have an addition to the agenda.
Mr. Godfrey, if I may, the, would like to add to the agenda somewhere before the public hearings and deliberations, a discussion about the Planning Commission adopting some rules of procedure similar to what the City Commission adopted in December of 2021.
Okay. Proceed, please.
Thank you. As I said, in December 2021 through ordinance 11-2021, the City Commission adopted in Chapter 212.02, Section 17 of the Rules of Procedure of the Commission, some rules to deal with public comment periods. As a time for citizens to make comments, they're not intended as a form for debate or to engage in question or answer dialogues with the Commission or with staff. Commissioners are encouraged, but not required, to not directly respond to speakers during the public comment periods. At the conclusion of speakers' remarks, the presiding officer may refer a question to city staff if appropriate. The idea, of course, is that the public has an opportunity to address the Commission, but there are some limitations to that. And by adopting 212.0217, and you each should have a copy of this in front of you, 1B talks about public hearings when scheduled. Speakers may present facts and opinions on the specific matter being heard by the Commission. A three-minute time limit is imposed per speaker. In the discretion of the presiding officer, the time limit for individual speakers may be lengthened or shortened when appropriate. In subsection E, during the general public comment portion of the meeting, speakers may address the Planning Commission on any matter within the control or jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. A speaker shall be permitted to address the Planning Commission once for up to three minutes during this portion of the meeting. On today's agenda, we have two public hearings under 6A and 6B, and then on the agenda, the general public comment is in item nine. The proposed adopting rules are that the speakers shall address all remarks to the presiding officer and not to individual commissioners or staff members. Speakers shall not address the remarks to members of the public in attendance at the meeting. And then in Section 4, there are provisions for the presiding officer to call a speaker, a rule a speaker out of order if they violate the time limit, become repetitive. They cannot yield their portions of time to other speakers, engage in personal attacks upon a city employee, administrator, or commissioner, use obscene or profane language, engage in slanderous or defamatory speech, use derogatory racial, sexual, or ethnic slurs or epithets relating to any individual or category of persons, or engage in conduct that interrupts or disrupts the meeting. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Commission, let's take this under advisement, and I would look for a motion to adopt these rules.
So moved.
Support.
There has been a motion supported to adopt these rules. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The rules are adopted. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to public hearing. Ms. Hernandez, would you please present the special use permit 0-06-22?
Sure. And I apologize if I misread your name. Petition from Ramaz Abdolnoor, 242259 Mile, Suite 180, Southfield, Michigan, 48033, requesting a special use permit for property located at 5700 Beckley Road, Suite F. The request is for a self-storage facility. Property is Zone B2, Regional Commercial District pursuant to Sections 1251.42 and 1281.05 of the zoning code. Parcel number is 0086002600.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan, I understand that you are presenting this. Please proceed.
Yep. So this is an application, again, for a self-storage facility at 5700 Beckley Road, Suite F. Suite F is located at the very southern portion of the Mingus Creek Mall. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building at the site for self-storage facilities on the inside of the building. The applicant is not proposing any alterations to the exterior or to the parking area. Now, just important for commissioners to note that the parking for this site is provided by the Mingus Creek Mall owner. That parking is located immediately adjacent to the, to Suite F and in the building. That's the subject of this proposal. The special use permit application, Staff Fields meets a couple of the stated goals of the master plan, notably the repurposing, repositioning of land within the city to meet the goals and needs of residents. If you look at 2020 census data, you'll see that roughly 70% of the city's housing stock is rental occupied versus about 60%, or I'm sorry, 70%. We have about a 70% rental occupant rate versus about 60% statewide. And so having a higher population of renters within the city likely has increased the need for these sorts of facilities citywide. Staff does not find that the proposal will negatively impact any of the surrounding areas or the city at large, and doesn't find any problems with emergency services reaching the site. Site's very accessible right off of Beckley Road and is immediately adjacent to a large parking area. I believe the applicant is here today, and he can speak to the project as well.
Thank you very much. Just for clarification for people who will watch this, this is a former Cut Rate and then Azuka location, just for local reference. I now declare a public hearing open, and someone speaking in presenting the information, sir? If you'll come forward and tell us your name and your address and your relationship to this request.
My name is Ramaz Abdolnoor. We're located in 242259 Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, Suite 180. We're the owners of the Felpashe, the old Felpashe, Suite F. We're proposing the special use. We have tried several retail applications or retail uses. Due to change of retail, we think this is the only viable choice for us right now to make it an economically feasible project. And we're proposing to do a self-storage. As the planner indicated, with the growing need of the population, it should be an added value to the community.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Not at this point.
If you'd just take a seat right behind you so that if there are questions, we can talk to you. Is there any citizen that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Any citizen wishing to speak against this petition? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed and would seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use petition for the self-storage facility located at 5700 Beckley Road, Suite F.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion from the commission? Seeing none, Ms. Hernandez, would you take the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Godfrey?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Springer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Mayor Banky?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your financial support in Battle Creek, and we hope that you have a successful endeavor. Ms. Hernandez, would you please read B, Special Use Permit Amendment S-07-22?
Yes. Petition from Granton Lakeview Real Estate LLC at 14420 South Elmer Road, Battle Creek, Michigan, 49015, requesting a special use permit amendment for property located at 14661 South Elmer Road. The request is for an addition to an existing assisted living facility. Property is Zone R1A, Single Family Residential District pursuant to Section 1251.46 and 1281.05 of the zoning code. Parcel number is 0071001000.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing open, and do have a person presenting this. Please come forward, tell us your name, your address, and your relation to this request.
My name is Scott Canton, 3004 Gardner, Parma, Michigan. Thank you, Planning Commission, for letting us come in front of you. It's been a joy working with Susan in Marcy on this project. What we would like to do at Lakeview is add on the back of the building, add six more apartments and a new fitness room, PT room, and also possibly add on the south side of the building where the dining room is. We are licensed by the state of Michigan. They have certain requirements for square footage for resident usage, and the possibility of adding on the dining room is something that may, we may incur that as well. So we have looked at a lot of various ways to add on Lakeview, and this really is the most feasible and the most practical way to grow our community and serve seniors in the Battle Creek area.
Thank you. Anything further?
That's it.
Thank you. Now, is there citizens that would like to speak in favor of this? And those opposed? Yes, sir. And I'm going to remind the public the rules that we just adopted. You have three minutes to make your presentation, and we're speaking only on this issue. Up to the microphone, please, and tell us your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. So my name's Mike Goy. I live at 133 Barbados Trail. I live directly behind Lakeview Assisted Living, and will be arguably the most impacted neighbor in the neighborhood. When I bought my home four years ago, I was told that Lakeview Assisted Living previously promised the neighborhood there would be no more building at the location. And then I subsequently bought my home when I was assured of that. If I would have known this promise would be broken, I would not have purchased my home and would not have looked, I would have looked elsewhere. Now, Lakeview Assisted Living actions are going to negatively impact my family and home. I will have to deal with potentially a new road only feet from the side of my house, increased traffic, a couple of years of construction noise, dirt, dust, materials, and trash if the project goes beyond Phase 1. And I'll be financially impacted as well, as my home value will significantly be decreased with the construction of the new commercial facility. I did have a couple of questions I wanted to raise as well. I did talk to Mr. Canton earlier. We had a pleasant conversation, and I did mention that I'd ask a few questions for the benefit of those that are here. He did answer a number of them already, so they may be repeats for him. But I did ask, when Phase 1 is planned to begin, if approved, and what's the duration of the project? And would construction for Phase 1 be accessed through Barbados Trail, through our neighborhood, or would it be accessed through Elmer Road? And then, just the word Phase 1 makes one think, well, if there's a Phase 1, there's got to be subsequent Phases 2, right? So we're, myself and I'm sure the rest of the neighborhood would be curious to the subsequent phases, if there are any. And lastly, if the project is approved, will the city mandate significant screening so that there's trees and things that will screen the facility from our neighborhood? The facility has, they've been great neighbors, don't get me wrong. They've been pleasant to live next door to, and everything's fine in that regard. But from a screening perspective, when the initial project began years ago, either there was no screening or it was very minimal. So I just, if it does get approved, I would ask that we have appropriate screening as well. I guess that's all I have to add at this time.
Thank you very much. There was a handback here. Yes, sir. Remembering that you have three minutes, and please tell us your name and your address, please.
Yes. My name is Kevin Culp, and my address is 150 Barbados Trail. And, you know, I'm here to kind of voice the same concerns that Mr. Goy has as well. My wife and I bought our house about a year and a half ago for our growing family. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and a 10-month-old daughter. And again, you know, we've had no issues, just as Mr. Goy said, with the assisted living facility being there. However, when you do see the words Phase 1, it does beg the question, what's going to be Phase 2 and possibly Phase 4? And I guess my question for the panel as well is, if this is Phase 1 and this permit is granted, then will they have to get another permit for an extra phase? Or if this is rezoned in their favor, is it their property to do what they want, such as what Mr. Goy was saying as putting in a street? You know, I mean, this is a residential neighborhood that I moved to with the intentions of raising my family and not having a company come in and adding extra living facility or whatever it may be onto that, and having extra, you know, vehicles, or, and if they do end up using commercial vehicles for anything that's the services that they use coming through our neighborhood. And so, you know, that's the question I have for you. And I saw that you had shaken your head there, that they would have to do that. And so that's one of my biggest concerns, is that, is there's just kind of a blanket permit that once it's rezoned, this is Phase 1, and they don't have to come back for Phase 2, Phase 3, whatever it may be. And so that's one of my biggest things. And, you know, I have a lot of stuff written here, and I think Mr. Goy had kind of answered some of the stuff. But, you know, I think one of the biggest things here, it's a business versus the residence. But regardless, we're all citizens. We pay our taxes. We pay our taxes to live in a residential area, and I shouldn't have to worry about a company extending out, whether it's on their property or not. Theirs is zoned the way it's zoned for a reason, and ours is zoned the way it is for a reason as well. So my question to you is, if you were in the same position as me, Mr. Goy, and many of the other people that live in that area that pay, you know, our taxes, we pay a nice price for our houses, how would you feel if this proposal was brought to you and you lived in that neighborhood? Would you be in the same spot as me right here, speaking out against that? And I think if the answer is yes, then this should not be passed, because part of the government is listening to the people. That's what I teach my third graders every day. Government's supposed to be here for the citizens. I understand that there are citizens that live there as well, but again, it is a business, as long as, as well as a residential area for them. And so, you know, everybody from the city of Battle Creek keeps saying, believe in Battle Creek. It's hard to believe in Battle Creek when you're trying to allow permits such as this to happen, and it could be negatively affecting neighborhoods of people that live here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that wish to speak? Please tell us your name and address, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Davis, and I live at 118 Mesa Verde. I've lived in the neighborhood long enough that, to me, I would consider this Phase 3. Mr. Canton came in and wanted to build initially, and the neighborhood was opposed to him building at that point. He stated he wanted to be a good neighbor. The city went ahead and let him build. Not long after he was there, he came in again and said, hey, I'm going to add on. That would have been Phase 2. Again, it was approved, and he added on with the neighborhood being opposed. And all through that, he suggested he wanted to be a good neighbor, which I believe they tried to do. Now he wants to add on again. And this could really change some of what makes our neighborhood special. The trees and wildlife that line, you know, around people's homes make it very private. And also, a lot of the people walk their pets in the street, and the kids play. The neighborhood has one way in, one way out. About 90% of the traffic there has a vested interest in our neighborhood because they live there. If this addition is approved, and in any way they tie into the corner of Mesa Verde and Barbados, we're going to get all that traffic coming right through our neighborhood. Employees, residents, delivery trucks, they're going to be lined right through our neighborhood to Elmer because that'll be the route. I'm here today to voice opposition to this request to add on to Mr. Canton's business. He said both times earlier that he wanted to be a good neighbor. We're here today asking that you help him honor those words and not move forward with this addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Yes, sir. As you well know, please state your name and address.
I feel like that was put in place so I didn't speak more than three minutes. Anyway, my name is Dave Walters. I reside at 262 Jackaranda Drive in the city of Battle Creek. I'm here today to oppose this special use permit, but also have an idea that maybe postponing it might be the way to go, based on the people that have already spoken, and hopefully maybe some of the things that I'm going to say as well. During my official duties as a city commissioner, another commissioner and I met face-to-face with Mr. Canton years ago, and his statement to us was, this is one and done. We will build this one building. We will put that in place, and we will put barriers such as, and buffers such as trees and things like that, which they've done. However, like Mr. Davis said, there's been a Phase 2, and now a Phase 3, and maybe a Phase 4 for all we know. So it bothers me the fact that in official capacity, he would tell us that, and now it's changed. The next thing I would like to bring up is, I would offer the postponement because if you have not visited Jackaranda- you have not visited Jacaranda and stood at the corner of Mesa Verde and Barbados Trail and looked at that, I would welcome you to do so, and do that before you voted yes or no today. You know, postpone this. Go out there. Do a field trip. Stand in Mr. Goy's yard and see how close that is at 133 Barbados. The other thing I would mention is, on page 33, which has some diagrams and such of that, it shows a proposed temporary road being put in. Look how close that is to Mr. Goy's property, and what impact that would have. I know that the basis for determination, we talked about it being harmonious. If you do that visit there, and you talk with neighbors, I doubt that you will find that this is indeed harmonious. So part of my proposal is this: Because there are no longer, that I'm aware of, NPC meetings, so there's not input from that, in that area, why not between now and the next meeting that you would have, why don't the neighbors, or Mr. Ganton, set up a meeting in his facility, so the neighborhood can meet with him, ask all these questions, get answers on the record, and then you make a better decision for everyone? This "harmonious" word that I know gets tossed around, we really need to think about, in this neighborhood and every neighborhood in Battle Creek, there's no sidewalks there. Drive through our neighborhood. Walk through our neighborhood. Bike through our neighborhood, like everyone else does. So the traffic would indeed have an impact on possible safety, even during the construction period, or Phase Four, which might be putting a driveway through there. I guess I would just ask, please don't make a hasty decision today. Please don't do that. Take the time to drive out there. Take the time to view that, and make a good decision for the neighbors, for the city of Battle Creek, and for everyone involved, and for Mr. Ganton as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Again, please tell us your name and address.
I'm Chad Walshleger. I live at 137 Barbados Trail, right next to Mike. The traffic is a major concern of ours, with the young children in the subdivision, and also a possibility of a driveway going next to Mike's house. Like the previous people have said, there's quite a few children that play in there. I have children myself. What is the phase going to stop at? I moved in there about three years ago. Jeff was my neighbor, and I believe he was very verbal with Mr. Ganton about anything not being added on to the facility. And that is our, I believe Mr. Ganton sent him a text message and asked him if he left. And I called Jeff and asked him. And Jeff said to me, "Yes, I did receive a text message from Mr. Ganton confirming that I left." So if you don't have anything bigger and better on the phases, then why would you not come to our subdivision and ask us first and confirm that? If it's someone who's already moved to Hastings. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
I'm Sharon Zapata, and I live at 117 Mesa Verde Drive, which is at the opposite end of Ganton Facilities. The traffic that everybody's worried about for construction will be only temporary. The other traffic, I'm sure they can find another way to go through to access this. I'm concerned because they think that this is a casino, a drug rehab. This is a, I want to say, high-class assisted living. And a lot of our residents depend on that. They pay a nice rental. I don't think there's been any problems with the people. They really don't come and go. I mean, they're in bed usually by 7, 8 o'clock. It is just a place that our community needs. We have very few assisted livings of this grade in town. And it is his property, and if he could find a different way to make everybody happy and make it a win-win situation, I don't think it's a bad idea. I know they have a waiting list. I deal with seniors for 23 years, and there is very few housings for these people to stay in. And they're very happy. They're very content there. Their staff is phenomenal. I don't think anybody's ever gone over there and possibly visited Ganton Communities. Go over there. Visit with their people. See what it's like. I think everybody's mind would change. We've lived there for seven years, and like I said, I bumped right up to Helmer Road. We get garbage thrown in our yards. We've had a bird bath stolen. I mean, numerous things. But that didn't deter me from moving. And I really think that, as Dave Walters said, that yes, we should have a meeting with Scott. And I think this could be a win-win situation for everybody, because we are neglecting our seniors if we don't let him add on to accommodate his waiting list.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed and request a motion.
The staff report?
I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This petition, S-0722, is an application from Mr. Scott Ganton requesting an amendment to their existing special use approval to allow two additions to the existing legal non-conforming assisted senior living facility. Just to clarify, this is not a rezoning. Right now, this is an application for two additions to his existing building. The first addition would be 5,371 square feet for six residential units with kitchenettes and a physical therapy room on the north side of the building. This addition will connect to the existing wing of the building, which will allow residents to move easily through the facility to access the physical therapy room, and allow medical or emergency professionals quick internal access to these areas of the building as well, according to the applicant. The second addition of 325 square feet is to enlarge the dining room on the south side of the building. When the city's zoning ordinance was revised in 2020, assisted senior living went from special use approval to becoming a legal non-conforming use in the R1A single-family residential district, which that's what this is zoned and continues to be zoned. This use has a maximum expansion limit of 25%. The city's master plan shows this property as multi-unit residential. The proposed two additions that are the subject of this petition equal 11.44%, so roughly half of what would be allowed for an expansion, because it is now legal non-conforming. So there is a maximum limit at this point. Of the existing facility's square footage of 49,799, and are below the maximum limit as of this time. The proposed two additions also meet all of the specific zoning ordinance requirements for assisted senior living. Staff finds that this petition request is consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements and the general special use standards, listed in 1281.05 of the zoning ordinance. And we recommend approval of this petition with conditions. Also, in addition, to add to the analysis, the project will create a few new jobs, will provide additional units for a housing type that meets the needs of an aging population. The master plan multi-unit residential category specifically mentions assisted living facilities with access to professional care. The city's zoning ordinance requires building facade and roof variation for assisted senior living facilities in order, excuse me, to make them more closely resemble residential as opposed to a commercial appearance. And they have included these schematic renderings in their application, and that is like a contract. If this is approved, they have to follow that. Traffic is not anticipated to significantly increase as a result of this proposed use. There will be no city expenses associated with these proposed additions. Conditions are of approval that staff is recommending is, that if any adjustments need to be made to the site plan after planning and zoning and the Department of Public Works finish reviewing the site plan, that the parking, lighting, and landscaping be allowed to be adjusted to the current zoning ordinance. Two, the applicant will submit an as-built site plan for the city's records at the end of the process and building. Three, the approval of this amendment to their special use is directly tied to the proposed use as provided for by the applicant in their application materials and site plan. Any changes contrary to that, except for minor parking space, landscaping, and lighting adjustments, which I mentioned previously, would require review and approval by the Planning Commission and City Commission again. Number four is a general condition. We usually attach to everything all necessary approvals, and any required permit shall be obtained and maintained from the appropriate agencies. Number five, pursuant to Chapter 1281.02, no change in the use or occupancy of land or in the use or occupancy of an existing building shall be made, nor shall any new building be occupied for any purpose until a certificate of occupancy has been issued by the zoning administrator or his or her agent. And six, pursuant to Chapter 1281.05A, certificates of occupancy for special uses shall be valid for a period established by the City Commission, or as long as the use is established and maintained in conformity with the plans submitted and approved. Occupancy permits shall expire after one year if the use is not under construction or maintained. For good cause, and upon written application, the Planning Commission may extend a special use permit for six months. And of course, the Planning Commission may add additional conditions to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would call upon the commission to make a motion for this.
Well, after listening to some of the public comment, I'm a little concerned that we may be a little premature in addressing this at this time. I'm also concerned about the use not being hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. I wonder if the city staff could address that issue based upon the information that was provided by the citizens.
Yeah, according to their application materials and their site plan, we don't see any additional traffic or anything, except for potentially construction. But I'm not a construction manager, so I'm not sure how that would work. Coming through that area to the back of the building, this is strictly residential that would be accessed through the front of the building, and the dining room area, which again, would be accessed internally or through the front of the building. I don't know if that completely answers your question, but...
Well, I heard testimony that there would be some concerns about neighborhood uses and disturbing the neighborhood. I think it might be, I think our former mayor suggested that we table it or postpone this at this period of time, until a meeting can be scheduled between the neighborhood and the Ganton family. And I'll ask our attorney, which do you prefer? Do you prefer that we postpone it or table it?
You can't table it. You'd bring it back up at the end of this meeting, so you can only postpone it, postpone it to a specific time period, if that's the motion you want to make.
That's correct. I'd like to make the motion that we postpone.
Two?
Let's give it two months.
Two months. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to ask the applicant, is he willing to talk through these concerns as requested? We're making this motion based on that action, and so I just wanted to check with the applicant to see if he would indeed follow through with making those arrangements to kind of work through some of the concerns that have been raised this evening, and to then bring this back before this body for consideration.
Yeah, I'm willing to talk with more neighbors. I felt I reached out adequately. I guess what my concern is, what's going to be predicated in the future? Because the addition, it is what it is. And if I come back before planning and take your valuable time, what is a decision to be predicated on? I mean, everything is, the addition is pretty straightforward. We're not putting a road back there. We're going to construct an addition. It's going to have construction traffic, the same as building a house, basically, is what it is. So that's my concern as the owner and the builder and the developer. I do it all myself. I understand the folks in Jacaranda. I've talked with a lot of them for years, and I felt, up to this juncture, we've been a fantastic neighbor. And so I'm a little confused, Mayor Banky, if this is tabled, what's next? We come back in two months, and I've spoken, and I've had forums with the neighborhood, and they're still opposed. To me, it's just, it's a NIMBY situation. And I think we've been a fantastic tax-paying business in Battle Creek for years. So I'm a little concerned, to be honest with you. If Battle, I'm sorry, if Battle Creek doesn't want expansion and more taxes paid to their tax base, send that signal. Go ahead. But you might want to, we might want to just pause for a second. We're trying to do something good here, folks. Thank you.
Well, first of all, let me make sure that you understand that we appreciate your investment in our community. But this is a special use permit you've applied for. And we need to do our best to make certain that everyone is happy with the outcome. I clearly heard that there are some concerns. We'd like to see if we can address some of those concerns. If we can't, it may not get approved at the City Commission. I'm not sure. But let's work together, and let's see if we can come up with a compromise in order to answer some of the concerns that have been brought forth. It wasn't easy for the number of people that spoke to come up here and speak. I applaud them for doing what they did today.
Any other commissioner wishing to speak? Would you please read the motion by Mayor Banky?
Do you want me to call a roll call, roll vote?
No, I want you to reread his motion.
Mayor Banky made a motion to postpone S-0722 for two months.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Would you take a roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottfried?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Spranger?
No.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
No.
Mayor Banky?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Pardon?
Vote taken.
I think that...
Three, three noes and three yeses.
So without the majority, then, that doesn't move forward?
I didn't hear. I couldn't hear.
It was three and three.
Three and three.
So it wasn't a majority?
It doesn't pass. That would mean...
It does not.
The motion would not pass on a tie vote. Is there another motion? We're in limbo here, folks. We've got to make a decision. That motion didn't pass, so is there another motion on this request?
I'll make the motion for discussion purposes. Move to approve special use permit, S-0722.
And that would be with the conditions?
With the conditions presented by the staff.
There's a support discussion? And there's a support discussion?
I too appreciate your continued, I mean, I served on the commission, so you have been that neighbor and supporter of Battle Creek for quite some time, and I do appreciate that. I think in absence of a neighborhood planning council where a lot of this might have been discussed or fleshed out a little bit more, we might not have been here with maybe this many residents expressing concerns and pause at this time. And I hear you when you say you've, you know, met with residents, you've tried to answer as many questions as possible, you've felt that you have satisfied a lot of those questions. I think one of the residents speaking today mentioned that a lot of his questions had been addressed as he has met with you. But I do think there's an additional good faith effort between both residents and you as the builder and the owner and the individual seeking the special use that needs to occur. And that's why I voted for the postponement. I think it might be something simple. It seems like a lot of the different things that were mentioned, you even kind of addressed as you were speaking to us just a short moment ago. So it could be just clarification on your part to these residents to get, you know, past that hump. But there's also, it seems like some deeper conversations that need to happen that might not happen, you know, doesn't have the chance to happen right now. So I think allowing that time was my preference, and that's why I voted for it. I just wanted to mention that. Maybe not two months, but I think there is a benefit in having those addition, that additional forum.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
I just have the question. So this is for special land use only, correct? Is this site plan also a part of this, or would that be approved by staff, or would that be a separate, so that would be approved by staff?
Yes, if you want me to answer that on the record. Site plan would be approved by staff. The special use and site plan is tied together. However, basically, we review it for adjustments afterwards. Anything that you approve needs to be part of that site plan approval, however. So if you had other requirements, that would change the site plan, if that's part of your question.
Yep, it was. Okay, so just for clarity, we're just basically, we're supposed to look at this as an expansion of the existing use?
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. Which it already is and has been for a number of years, the same use.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right, since 2011.
Any other comment from the commission?
I just want to thank Commissioner Newman for that clarification, and I think the main concern that I've heard here today is just, you know, having the traffic through the neighborhood during construction and the actual construction noise would be the biggest issue. So if that's something that you can please mitigate with the neighborhood, you've stated that there will not be an additional road. I would ask staff that as you go through the site plan and are looking at that, that you take into account the neighbors living there when it comes to lighting and parking and shading this facility from the neighborhood and taking into account our new planning requirements that allow for that zoning to be, or the shading to be required. I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing done, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottfried? Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Spranger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Mayor Benkey?
No.
Thank you. As I get it, the vote is five to one, and the request would be approved. Ms. Hernandez, is there any old business?
No old business.
Any new business?
No new business.
Further comments by the public? This could be a three-minute discussion on anything that you want to discuss as long as refers to the city of Battle Creek. Yes, sir. And again, state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Kulp, and I live at 150 Barbados Trail. And what I continue to hear the panel say is that our main concern is the construction and the noise, and I don't feel that we're being heard correctly. I do feel that Mayor Benkey has heard us correctly, not only because he's voting what I would like to hear, but because the fact is that, you know, as many other people have said, this is beyond Phase One what is in this plan. Phase One happened a long time ago, even before I lived there. So for some residents that are already living there, this is considered Phase Two, Three, or Four, wherever there may be. And so where is it going to end? That's the thing here. That's what I was hoping that you guys would really understand, but apparently that got lost in translation, I guess. The noise and everything and the traffic, yes, of course, it's going to be a concern because I have two little kids that live there. I know lots of other little kids live in our neighborhood as well. It's not about just now. You have to think about what could be later on because, well, that's just kind of how things are with business. Businesses are going to try to expand. That's what they're trying to do. But what's going to happen beyond this phase? And so it's not just the construction, it's everything beyond that as well. And that's where, that's why all of us are coming to, you know, voice our concerns about this today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen wishing to speak? Okay, thank you. Staff comments?
Just one quick comment, and I apologize, going back to the original public hearing on the special use related to the self-sourced facility at 5700 Beckley. And I apologize, I did not discuss the conditions that were included in the staff recommendation for approval. Marcel, I don't know if you've got a recommendation for how to handle that now, but I just, after we had completed that topic, I, like I said, I apologize. I realize I did not address those conditions that were included in the staff report. So I don't know if simply an additional motion to include those conditions.
I don't recall that Commissioner Newman's motion had specific reference to those, so it would be very prudent to have another motion to clarify that.
Let's see if Commissioner Newman would expand his motion to include the eight conditions listed.
I would be happy to expand my motion to include the eight conditions.
And who supported that?
I don't know.
Would you?
I would support that.
Okay. Any discussion? Would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottfried?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Spranger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Mayor Benkey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff? Any commissioner? Commissioner Gray?
Yes, in relations to special use permit S-0722, I would still like to see, even though voting in favor, that this go forward with a conversation with those residents, and just wanted to ask Mr. Ganton if he would agree to that and to continue to work on trying to move forward as far as what was before us, especially with the clarification question that Mr. Newman asked. That's why I voted in favor, but I am still strongly interested in seeing that happen.
Yes, I will make a concerted effort to get with the neighbors in Jackaronda and try to alleviate any fears that they have. You have my word on that?
Yep.
I look forward to hearing from those residents on how that goes.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Then we're adjourned.